Mayor Breeden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas is running late.
Okay, so approval of the agenda where you're pulling item number one since Ed is not going to be able to be here. So, motion?
All motion as amended.
Second. Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approved, one absent.
Okay, public comment, I'm gonna go through it even though there's no public, well, there is, we have a, he's not exactly public, but, public comment, closed session, persons wishing to address the council on matters for closed session meeting, so at this time, speakers are limited to five minutes, a closed session, public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour, each speaker is asked to provide his or her name, seeing none, we will adjourn then to closed session. Okay, we're back in closed session. You all ready? I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. And Lindsey, would you lead us in the fight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Hester, would you lead us?
I'd be honored to the Father. We thank you this evening, we thank you for your wisdom and your guidance, we thank you for the opportunity, as men and women that serve this community to look for direction and purpose from you, continue to give us insight and continue to look into our inner hearts and see how we can serve the people that you've allowed us to be over and to give guidance and to seek your wisdom. Thank you for the men and women that volunteer, their time, their talents, and their treasures towards this great community. We love you and we thank you. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Okay, the city attorneys report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met with legal counsel to discuss, to discuss six pieces of litigation, some are currently pending, some are potential. The first one was City of Richcrest versus County of Kern, and no action was taken. The second one, potential litigation, City of Richcrest versus Southern California Edison, no action was taken. The third one, it's potential litigation with an undisclosed defendant or plaintiff. Councilmember Acton declared potential conflict of interest, recused herself, and left the room, no action was taken, but direction was given to staff. The fourth case is existing litigation, William Johnson versus City of Richcrest, pending in the federal court, no action was taken, direction was given to staff. The fifth one is existing litigation as well, it's the City of Richcrest versus Marasantos, pending in Sacramento Superior Court, no action was taken. The last one was also City of Richcrest versus Co., and also pending in Sacramento County Superior Court, and no action was taken.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we are not doing the presentation tonight because Ed was unable to be here, and we are put, going to put that on the next agenda. So if we can have public comment, persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on this agenda, speakers are limited to five minutes, the public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour, each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Public comment, please. Wow. Thank you, I think. So we will not have public comment tonight. Council announcements. Jim, you wanna start first? No?
Just hope to see you guys all at the fair, that's all.
Same.
I just wanted to thank all the people from Rich Project who helped clean up China Lake Bou, I'm sorry, College Heights Boulevard. It was great fun, lots of work, and it is amazing to see about what 75 people can do all working together, so I thank people from Rich Project and all the volunteers, and what great fun, and even if your vehicles got, had to be towed away, it was still good fun, so, thank you. I appreciate everybody who came and worked hard, it looks great. And, sir?
Just wanted to announce that on Sunday, we will be celebrating our 24th year of service here in the community as pastor, so, yay.
Yay, yes, congratulations. Good. Mike?
I have no announcements.
Okay. The consent calendar, all items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council, the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, that item will be removed from the consent calendar and be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Item number two, proposed action to approve two resolutions declaring the city's intention and initiating proceedings to annex territory annexation number 2012-2, the Rich, to the Richcrest Landscaping and Lighting District number 2012-1, and to levy and collect annual assessments related thereto commencing fiscal year 2017-18 pursuant to the provisions of Part Two of Division 15 of the California Streets and Highways Code and calling for property owners protest proceeding to submit to the certified owner, property owners, the question of levying such assessments and establishing assessment range formula for said annexation territory pursuant to the provisions of the two Cal, of the California Constitution Article XXII-D. I don't even know what that number is, sorry, I can't speak.
Thirteen D.
Thank you, thank you, thirteen, I got it, I thought D was a number I didn't ever remember in grade school.
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, thank you all, my dumbness has shown. Number two.
Number three.
Three, sorry. Proposed action to approve draft minutes of the Richcrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority minutes dated October 5, 2016. Is there anybody who would like to pull any of these items? I'd like to pull number two. Okay, so, so a motion to approve item three, please.
Second.
Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor. I'm sorry, Thomas.
I take that as an honor. Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approved.
I have one question, Mr. Culp, in the description of it, it says, "A new assessment did not fund any portion of the flood control facilities, irrigation system, and plantings. The flood control facilities require a special benefit assessment district proceedings and serve a regional benefit versus a project-specific benefits." Can you explain that, and what is the difference between the item before that that's described?
Anybody, is this mic working?
There you go.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yes, the lighting and landscaping maintenance district is specifically for lighting and the landscaping for the Walmart project as well as the surrounding properties, and that's very specific in what that will allow you to do, those, that lighting and landscaping district has to be specifically for those uses. It cannot include something that is of a, like a drainage facility, that requires a separate or a different type of district, and that's called a 1982 Special Benefit Assessment District. And those types of districts cover any kind of improvements relative to drainage, drainage features, and I think also might include parks as well. I have our consultant here tonight to answer any specific questions that you might have regarding the formation of the assessment district, if you have any, but...
Could, could they give us a brief update? I guess I really, what I'm trying to see is, there was the first, the total annual maximum assessment, it talks all about that, but then the difference between the new assessment district not funding any portion of the flood control, talk to me where that funding came from, and how that is being paid for, and how it's being accomplished.
And are you speaking specifically to the drainage facilities, the irrigation system within the drainage?
Yes, yes.
Well, that is not covered by any assessment district, and that will have to be funded.
And that says there, yeah.
That will have, that work will have to be funded by, by the, by the city. The city, with the drainage improvements, will be responsible for the maintenance of the irrigation system and the planting and the maintenance of, and cleanup of, of those drainage facilities in the event that we have to go in and, and clean up those facilities.
The plantings was another question, the plantings of plants, the plantings of trees, the plantings, so we are required to maintain that?
Well, the, the planting that's within the, in the flood control facilities are there to establish a plant where we won't have erosion.
Right.
And so, there's a plant establishment period that we have to make sure that those plants are stable and in place, and after that point, then, irrigation system can be evaluated whether it's necessary to remain there or continue to operate. But the plantings are specifically for erosion control and plant establishment.
At some point in time, if the plantings don't prove to be successful, and, and do we have to go back and replant, is it, is it the contractor's job to do that? We obviously, you're not gonna be out planting, and either are us, so I'm wondering, who, is it a contractor we have that will come do that?
Well, there is a warranty period on work that's performed, so there is, I believe, I'm uncertain on the plantings, usually it's not as long as, like, let's say, construction of a roadway or something, and I think on the order of 90 days is what a landscaper's typically responsible for in terms of replacing any plants that aren't successful. But after the 90 days, let's say whatever that warranty period is for a landscaper, after that period, then it would be our responsibility to reestablish those if we want to make sure we're protecting those facilities.
I understand, okay. Is there any other, oh, Mr. Matthews.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Culp, I had some questions, are we annexing land to the city or just to, in a, a maintenance district or whatever we?
Yes, Mr. Matthews, this is an annexation to an existing lighting landscaping maintenance district that we established for the D.R. Horton project, that's the, that's the first of our landscaping, lighting, maintenance districts, this is an annexation into that 2012-1 lighting landscaping maintenance district.
Okay. And then, the other thing is that, excuse me, I believe it said that there's other properties involved besides the Walmart complex, and that ballots are going to be sent out to those property owners?
Yes, sir, we're required, the lighting landscaping maintenance district, the state requirements are that we have to send out to those properties that are benefiting by the improvements to allow them to agree or disagree to be annexed into the assessment district, and it's in the form of a ballot, in which they can protest or decline, the, decline being involved within the assessment district. Those ballots are taken, and if there's a majority of those property owners that agree to be within the assessment district, then, then we'll be able to impose that assessment district on those properties.
Okay, so if they deny or, or decline, they are just not included, we, what?
Well, if there's a majority that, that decide that they do not want to be in this assessment district, then the assessment, the annexation fails.
Okay. And, so it just goes away, or we got any recourse, or where do we go from there?
Well, it, I think that might be something that the council might consider, I might have to ask our consultant to answer that more specific question, but it's my understanding, if the majority decides that they do not want the assessment district, then the assessment district fails. I should say the annexation fails.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess, well, I think that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions from council? Any other comments from the public? Okay, motion?
All motion, approval of item number two.
Second.
Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approved.
Okay, the next item. Okay, the next item is item number four, a discussion, proposed, provo, oh, Lord, and proposed action to provide direction to the city's representative on the board of the Union Wells Valley Groundwater Authority regarding the proposed operational documents. I asked this to be sent to all of you, so you could look at it, there is one item that, that was from last time, it was the committee makeup, and I asked you to look at it and see what you thought, because I felt the committees should be defined with names, and those people who are part of the problem, which is all of us, could be part of the solution. And so therefore Meadowbrook Farms, Mojave Pistachio, Cerros Valley Minerals, and I think that was the other one that was, that were named as part of the committees to work on this particular TAC committee, and, and I would like permission from you to go ahead and approve that, and I would like some comments if you have on the rest of the items that are there in, in the document. There, this is a proposed document and how to proceed with the GSA, it has already been approved and will go to the state for a public hearing, and that is why that is on there, so you can see the progress of it, but I'd like to hear what you all have to think about that and its makeup.
But this is already approved, is that what you're saying?
The, our, the, the GSA has already been approved, we voted for it at the last meeting, and it is going to the state with a, I think it's a 30-day, anybody, does anybody remember that exactly? I think it's either a 30 or 90-day time to come back for the public hearing on that, I think it's 30 days. And so that's where we are, I would like to know what you think, because these aren't, basically what you have given me is direction to follow procedural matters, but not develop policy matters, and there is no policy matters per se here, except the makeup, and discussing and understanding the mission, and to go ahead and, the committees, the committees is, will be probably the most important part of this GSA, having people develop solutions and bring back to the, the GSP for the plan, and come back to the GSA for approval. Boy, all those letters, but that's basically, so I'm asking your input, what do you all think? Anybody?
Excuse me, on the, so you have the approval of the GSP Advisory Committee structure, right, which is the five GSA members and the, and the associate members, each pointing one person, I have that, two ag, two domestic well owners, Cerros Valley Minerals, Inure Current CSD, Eastern Kern County RCD, and a business. But then, in my other notes, I'm trying to make sure, is that the exact breakdown at this point, because I know it changed some, and I just wanna make sure that I...
The change was to add those on to, add those named entities on.
Okay, that's what I'm missing.
On to the technical advisory committee, or the, or the policy?
Those would be, they, because of the technical advisory, the TAC, they were asking professionals, so it may not be that particular, like, if I was Mojave Pistachios, I wouldn't send me, because I don't have the technical, professional information and knowledge to go ahead and participate, so they would appoint someone or ask someone to serve in their stead for that.
On the TAC, but on the, on the TAC, but then on the GSP, then they would maybe send you, or whatever, okay.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure I was, I was following that, 'cause it's pretty much the same structure I'm, from other.
From, from the groundwater management.
Yeah, from the groundwater management, so, which makes sense to me. And, I think, did the feedback from the public at all, was it positive? That was my only other question, as far as when you guys were setting up some of the groups, did everybody see?
They haven't, they haven't seen this yet. There was the committee that came back, that was brought to the GSA meeting last time, and both the water district and the city said they were unable to vote on it this time, because they hadn't had the opportunity to come back to the councils and their board to say, "What do you all think?" So now that we will, there was a lot of question, you can see from the minutes.
Yeah, I know, that's why.
It was, it was like three and a half hours, and we had to miss the groundwater management group, because the meeting went for so long, so this is why we're trying to find a more cohesive way to try to do these things and get them done in a timely manner with input from everyone.
As Chip used to be fond of saying, you know, when you're starting and you have to do everything in public, it's like making sausage, and it's not a pretty process at all, so, until you get it going down, but I think it's great, 'cause I think it's representing everybody, everybody's gonna have a, a voice that, you know, has asked and, and that should, so, you know, as far as recommendations and stuff, so I like the way it's set up.
Any, Jim?
I have some comments. So while we're on the committees, I'll, I'll come in on that, and I have one more from earlier. I have no problem with, with all the problems, or with the suggestions for the technical advisory committee, I think that'd be just fine.
Which, which committee?
The technical advisory committee.
Okay, thank you, okay.
The policy advisory committee, they're gonna be the ones that actually are creating the plan, correct?
Yes.
So for them, I, I do have a problem with the non-voting members, are, are they gonna be, like, appointees, kinda like we have the planning commission? Or is this gonna be members of the board?
They are going to be asked to serve by the entities that are part of, that are the policy advisory, that policymakers, the five, the five entities.
The board members, yeah.
Yes. And, and the voting GSA members, thank you, that's a better way to say it.
Okay. So I, I do have a problem with including the non-voting members, or having appointees from non-voting members on the policy advisory committee. I think that should be limited to only the voting members and the associate members. So maybe, I mean...
Okay, but they are going to make, make recommendations to the five entities, they will not develop policy.
Correct. Well, they're developing the plan that the five, that the board member's gonna vote on.
Gonna vote on.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I don't want. I, I want, I want to have appointees from the, the voting members, and maybe even the associate members, but to include, you know, like Meadowbrook Farms and Mojave Pistachio, Cerros Valley Minerals, to have them be part of making the plan.
They are.
I don't know.
That is part of it.
I know.
They are part of it.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think that's good, I don't think that's right.
Okay, who would you, you only want then the five entities to develop the plan?
I would say the five men.
And they're appointed?
Yeah, I would say the five entities and maybe even the associate members.
Okay.
So the seven.
But the five entities are still gonna have the final vote.
That's correct.
Even if those, those, they're trying to allow those people to participate.
And I, I think it's good that they do participate, especially in the technical advisory committee, 'cause they're gonna have a lot of expertise and, and knowledge and data that's gonna contribute to that, but in terms of forming policy, which will be the plan, I, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that.
Making policy recommendations, the formation of the policy would come from the five voting entities.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Okay, so I, I guess, okay, I'm not trying to be obstructive, I'm trying to understand, 'cause I don't understand what you're saying then, help me.
Well, this, let me think if I could come up with an analogy. In my mind, they, they already have representation on, on the board in terms of creating policy. If...
Through the five.
Through the five voting members, yeah. I, I just don't feel comfortable with that, I, I could see that going badly.
Okay.
I mean, I, I understand, you know, they have financial interests in, in water, and how water is distributed, and, and where that goes.
Well, plus the fees imposed could have a major impact on them also.
It could, absolutely.
'Cause this agency is going to have the ability to levy fees.
So would the, would the plan that they come up with tend to favor their, their position financially?
Well, you read the direction to them here, is that you may not do that.
Well...
Read the objectives, now clearly, no, you may not take a breath, but yes, I'm going to take a breath.
Right, yeah.
You know, I mean, the objectives here say you may not do that. Clearly, they're human beings, they're gonna vote to say, "I really, really wanna spend a million."
Which, which objective?
Let me read through this here.
It's...
I, I did read this, it's just...
We're collaboratively, with the members, where is it, provide data, support, where, it's in there, okay. Sorry, we just got this on Monday.
Yeah, no, you're fine, I just barely read it today, so...
Under the committee structure, if I'm...
Committee structure, okay.
Okay. The PAC is the primary policy advisory body.
That's it, yeah.
To the groundwater authority, they will guide plan preparation implementation with assistance from TAC, the technical advisory, a technical consultant facilitator and program manager, 'cause it's basically allowing the public, just as we do here, have a voice, it's the same thing, just smaller, because of the entities involved.
But it does, it does refer to the, I'm sorry, it does refer to the fact that you will be working together, and that you...
There's the...
It's in there, it is, is in there, where it says that you are not there to only represent yourselves.
I guess...
Unified recommendation?
I guess I'm coming from, from the perspective, we, we did not include these water companies, is that the right word for it, Mojave Pistachio?
Yeah.
We, we did not include these water companies as voting members of the board for a reason.
That's right, right.
That same reason, I would assume, should apply to the committee that's forming the policy.
Okay.
That's my perspective.
Okay.
Except, the five voting members still have veto authority over what they recommend.
That's true.
That's right.
That's true. They could still override it, yeah.
That's why...
That's why, I, I don't have a problem with it, because I, I think, the more you get involved in developing the policy, I think, hopefully the better it will be, as long as they're not self-serving. I understand your concern about self-serving.
Yeah.
But the five voting members have veto power over that, so if they're self-serving, hopefully the five members will see that and take that out.
Right. I, I would hope so, too.
And that, that is one of the reasons why it, I like the idea of naming those people, because they are developing part of the solutions. Doesn't mean the, the voting entities will say, "Yes, you all are perfect, and, and everything you brought to us is exactly what we view," but it does give them an opportunity, and it's awfully difficult to criticize something that you've been a part of, the development of.
That's right.
And, and they're part of the problem, so I think they should at least have some initial opportunity to have some input to the solution. I, I understand your concern, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, I think I see your, your point of view on that as well. Let, let me make one more comment on a, a different matter entirely, on a page... On page, let me see if I can find it here.
They're not numbered.
They're not numbered, are they? Well, it's the very first page, so that'll be easy. Under where it says discussion, it said, "This item is to provide an overview of the board of the public hearing that is set for November, blah, 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 to receive public comment and consider if the County of Kern should become a groundwater sustainability agency." I, I, I'm not sure if I'm thinking about this wrong or, or not, why, why is it only County of Kern there?
Well, Kern, Kern County, Inyo County, and San Bernardino County.
Are, but they're not listed.
They are part of the voting public, the, the voting entities.
Yeah, they are.
Yes.
I was just concerned why it only said County of Kern, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Where, where are you writing them?
Uh, very first page, very first paragraph. I don't know, and, and we're not going to solve that tonight, but maybe ask at the meeting why, if that's correct.
What first page are you talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the memorandum dated October 20th, 2016, Agenda Item 8, and it comes from the IWVGA Administrative Office.
Oh, you're talking about the agenda?
I'm, I'm sorry, I should have been a little more specific. Agenda, Agenda Item Number 8, the very first page of that one, sorry. We were talking about that one already, so I assumed we'd stay on that.
And it was because the SGMA allows eligible public agencies to elect to become a GSA for a given groundwater basin that is in critical overdraft. Because I thought the county had to take the lead, and then, and then it mentions that we're all JPA underneath, right, so.
Yeah, because the county took the initiative.
Just because they're taking the lead?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Lori, did you have any?
No, I was actually, I was good once I, I made sure I understood how the committees were going to be set up, I'm, yeah, okay. It affects them, they need a voice.
I'm, I'm fine with the discussion.
I'm fine with it, I'm glad you brought it to us, so we can look at it.
Okay. So is there any public comment?
Yes, Mike Neal, we've got two things on this. One is what you've had the majority of your discussion about, and the, the, well, the PAC Committee, we call the PAC Committee, and the TAC Committee, which are slightly different. And, you know, if you recall, following the, the months of discussions here in the GSA, you know, a number of people from the very first said that the domestic well owners were, were not getting representation, basically kind of objecting to the whole structure, and these committees were basically what they were told, well, this is where you're going to get your representation at, along with, of course, these, the other entities that were, that were put in here. So, you know, I think this was, apparently, you know, through the course of the process, was a bit of a, okay, here's how we're going to compromise on that, you know, with, of course, me up there saying, "Oh, you guys need to be elected, we don't need to be, none of you need to be appointed," but, you know, we weren't, they weren't going there. But the, so you get to have their say, and, and, you know, when I look at the, the two committees, they're, they're just slightly, slightly different, you know, and at the front end of the last, the last meeting, it was again brought up by, by Mrs. Decker, and I think actually after they had this discussion, I, I watched the video, I did get to be there, you know, they got, what, somehow three, yeah, three ag members on the, the PAC Committee, and, you know, she was lobbying to get, okay, if you're going to get three, three ag members, then we want, I would like to have three domestic well owner members, then it's, you know, it's just the whole, like I say, that, that train of thought that without this, you know, with the board makeup itself, the domestic well owners essentially only have supervisor Gleason representing them, and that's it. So, you know, the, the ag guys, of course, they're, you know, they want to have a voice in there, they're, and, you know, they're a large user, they were, they were given their place, so just to kind of bolster what's just been discussed there.
But, but Mike, you, you, I think you understand, or at least I hope you do, that none of this is written in concrete.
Right, this is coming in tomorrow.
And that at any point in time, if three domestic well owners, because there really is no, nobody representing the domestic well owners. There are, there is an Indian Wells Valley Well Owners Association, of which I don't know how many, I used to know because I was president of it, but there, there is no organization to represent themselves. So we hope at some, or at least I would hope at some point in time, some of those people would come forward and say, "I'd like to serve, I'd like to be a part of this," and, and are you going to say, "No, you can't, you, can you have 300 of them?" Of course not. But can you have two? Can you have three? Can you have five? That's something that will be, I don't think anybody sees this written in stone.
No, I, no, I'm just kind of supporting, you know, what, what they're proposing here in, in this document.
Okay, all right.
I think it's a good start at it, you know, giving these guys, you know, their, their place at, at the table. So, the, the other thing that I, I'm a little surprised about, and I need to ask a question, and this is, let's note it, is Agenda Item 7 in the Report on Revenue, are we, are we doing this whole thing right now?
Are we redoing?
The groundwater, are we getting all, all the documents in the groundwater meeting for tomorrow? Okay. So the Report on Revenue Consultant, I was, I was glancing through that now. If you, if you've got that, Item 2, about a little over halfway down the page where it's talking about the noticing of the meeting, this is surprising me a little bit. There are the saying that, and this is talking about imposing fees and so forth, and the noticing of the meetings about discussing the fees. It said, they're, they're saying here that the notice shall be provided pursuant to Section 6066 of the Government Code by posting notice on the website of the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, or, and this is what seems strange, mailing to any, any interested party who files a written request with the agency for mailed notice of the meeting on new or increased fees. And then they say you've got to renew this request. Everything I've seen over the years I've been involved in here, when you're going to put fees on people, they have to publish notice of the, the public hearings on the fees, and yet now, they're basically, I think, saying, "Well, we're putting it on the agency's website is, is good enough, and well, if you want a written notice, you've got to, you've got to ask for that," and they're, they're citing a code that I'm not familiar with, 6066. So, I mean, is this really what's supposed to happen according to California law? It doesn't sound right to me.
Michael, can you address that section of California law? How it is required or what is not required, because I don't know the law.
I don't have that section in front of me here, but these committees and the, and the JPA, they are subject to the Brown Act, so I assume the same, the same rules would, and notice requirements would, would apply. I don't think you can get, get around that, but I can look at that, I don't have it here, if I can, if I can retrieve it.
One of the things I know that they had talked about was to try to make it as user-friendly as possible, so that if you wanted to be able to see it, you didn't have to go to Bakersfield to find it, you could see it on the website, and if you wanted a particular, without having to go to it, you could ask to have these information items sent to you. And I don't think it says in there every single time, I think it said, if you want to be on there.
Well, it said you've got to renew it every, every April 1st if you want to keep getting them, but.
Well, once a year.
And I appreciate that, the, you know, the request of getting the, the notices mailed for people's convenience, because there are, you know, some people that they don't get the local papers, so, you know, they're not going to see it. But I'm just very, very used to seeing all meetings like this required to be published in the, you know, the paper of whatever they call it, you know, general circulation in, in the area, and they, they're saying, "Oh, 6066 of the Government Code is saying we can do it this way," which is either mail it if you ask for it, or put it on a website, which, you know, mostly everybody's on the web these days, but, you know, you've got to think about out there.
Well, that gives you the opportunity to mail.
There are some older people that they're not necessarily internet savvy, so, you know, they're probably going to be out in the dark as far as the noticing, so.
Well.
I'm going to look at this section tonight, they're going to obviously be having discussion about it tomorrow.
We will have discussion tomorrow at 10 o'clock.
You know, I think we may need to make sure they're, they're getting that, that part right, because I, I think that when you're going to put fees on somebody, it's very important to do your noticing properly.
Okay. Mr. Matthews.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Mr. Neal brings up a very valid point, I think. You, regardless of what the law says, it's not always right. You can't ask for a notice if you don't know that you need to ask for it, and I think that's what, that is lacking, because if, if they don't get a notice, then they don't know that it's out there. So, you know, it just makes sense to give them the notice in writing, in.
Okay, I will make that comment.
It does go on to say under number two in the second paragraph.
Two, that's right.
In addition to the requirements of the SGMA, you also have Prop 218 and/or Prop 26, but without having specifics, it's hard to say which one it falls under, but one would apply, so that everybody is properly noticed, because it's either going to take a supermajority or a ma, a majority protest, so. Until they know which one or what fees or what type of fees or any of that, they can't say for sure which one it's going to take until they know where it falls, until they come up with policy. But it has, it will fall under one of the two, because we have to.
I will ask, though, that the, that in the beginning, the first one be published in the paper, so that in, in papers of general circulation and adjudicated, so everyone has the opportunity to have seen it.
Madam Mayor, Government Code 6066 actually talks about publication in a newspaper for two successive weeks, so it is newspapers. It's probably just not summarized very clearly on this item here, but it does provide for such publication.
Thank you. Does that answer your question then, Mr. Neal?
Well.
Does that answer your question?
Oh, Mr. Neal, I was saying that I'm looking at 6066 here, and it talks about publications in newspapers for, for two successive weeks, so it does, it, that has to be done, and I think maybe the confusion is that this memo doesn't quite, quite accurately summarize 6066.
Yeah, and it's unclear to me if they're talking about posting it on the internet complies, that, that's their way of complying with 6066.
Yeah, I don't think you can get around the publication by, by saying you can do this by, by, on the website instead.
Okay, Mr. Widneck.
Thank you. Another thing the council should consider, building a little bit farther on what Mr. Sanders said as far as Peggy being the representative on this board, is that there's some belief within the public that the board is, the, this GSA authority is really emphasizing a lot that dominus users are not.
What users, sir?
The dominus, dominus?
Dominimus, okay.
Dominimus, okay. Users are kind of, they're alluding to that these people will probably not have any real risk with this new agency, even though the wording of the agency is that it could fall under everybody. It's kind of an inference that those, those users using, what's the, what's the number, Peggy, less than two acre?
Two acre feet of water, yeah, a year.
Are, will not really be subject to this GSA. However, there could be exceptions to that where they may be under. Now, my point in bringing this up is, is that there are some people in the public that believe that if these people are not subject to the fees that will come, we all know that fees will come from this agency, if they won't be subject to these fees, should they be involved on these committees to help set those fees for the rest of us that will be subject to those fees?
The, one of the things I believe we discussed, and I think it's in the minutes of the last meeting, was if, are we sure that dominus users will never be charged? And I think Mc Gleeson addressed that, he said, "No, we're not."
Right.
This is how we're starting out, this is the way we want to go, because there, we do not know the extent that we are going to be required to maintain, and this is what that we're, the, the people from the Department of Water Resources are going to address tomorrow and, and talk about. What is it that we have to do? Where are we with this? And so initially, the intent was dominus users are not going to be part of this. Action, not, okay, how do, how did?
I, I know where you're going.
Okay, you're, they're not part of it to, but they may be in the future, depending on how the law has changed. I remember the discussion.
Right.
From Phil talking at the county council, saying that they may be, they could be, it is something that is there.
Right.
But as it starts.
Right.
Until we know where we are and what we're doing, and I think we will by the time we have gotten to the point of the committees working and finding, hopefully, paths to solutions.
Right. And, and again, my point in bringing this up is for the other council members to make sure Peggy, the mayor, understands, as you're representative of that board, how you would want her to represent you.
That's right.
And us in this area, because it is, it's a fine line right now, in whether or not, if they're not involved in the potential for fees to, at this time, should they be involved in setting fees on the rest of us?
I think they.
It's a philosophical statement, or question.
I understand, I understand.
And I'm only trying to bring it out for the rest of the council, so you can think about this and provide guidance to her.
I think they probably will. I hope so, I know they will. They have never shied away from that in the past. Okay, Lindsay?
Hello, Lindsay Stevens. I'd just like to make a suggestion that the GSA for the public meetings, that they be considered to be moved to nighttime, because a lot of, I know, I know, it, it's just, a lot of people work during the day, so if you're really truly trying to get public input, and I know it went three and a half hours, so it sounds like you had lots of input, but, but I would just say, it would make it hard for a lot of the average, everyday public to attend the meetings, and I know they, they stream them online, but you can't comment when you're watching online, so that's just my concern.
One of the things, Lindsay, that was part of the discussion last time, and what I asked, because it, we could not do it on, it took prob, I'm trying, I don't want to exaggerate, I'm going to say a million, million emails trying to get all the entities there, especially San Bernardino County, who was Supervisor Lovinggood was busy almost every day, all, every time, every whatever, and, and we tried to do it now on Thursday night, the school board meets here. It took us forever just to come to one day when everybody could do it. And so then the school board meets here that night, so we said, "Okay, let's try it this way until December," and that was an emotion I made, "Let's keep it this way till December, see what happens, see how many people are actually coming and making their point known." And then we look at it, and I asked all the people to look at their calendars and see how we could try to come up with a consensus time to meet at night after December.
Okay.
So that was, that was the, and it was approved that way.
So the plan is to move it in January tonight?
Well, the attempt is going to be very, very much made to do so.
Okay.
But all the, because you have so many staff involved and people coming, Supervisor Lovinggood is coming from San Bernardino, and it's a long ways to come, and, but that's their choice, they want to be a part of it, and we want them to be a part of it.
And, and is there the option for those people to possibly call in? You know, like, I remember the one council meeting, Mike was able to call in from.
That's what, that's what we talked about, whether that was something we could, could work on and see that. At that time, I don't think anybody understood fully how long the meetings were going to be, and this is why we're going to try to keep them at a time and, and a time when it's good for all the people to be able to attend as well as the public, because it doesn't do any good if they're sending staff.
Right.
So we have to have the actual supervisors here.
Well, or they talk about the domestic well owners, they, probably, a lot of them have jobs, so getting here for.
Yeah, we all do, I don't know anybody here that's, that's working that doesn't, so, yes, we all want as many people to be there as possible, and that's why we're asking to do that again in December, look at it, but during this timeframe, to come up with times when everybody can do it in the evenings and a day that we all can do it.
All right, thank you.
I just want to make one thing clear, though, phoning in isn't quite as effective as being here.
Right, I know.
And I got disconnected three times, I had to dial in four times during that meeting,
And you have the fun of the time difference, too.
Yeah, I was two hours later there.
Okay. Sir?
Warren Cox, just an observation.
Just an observation. When Jim was asking his questions and that, you're the representative for the city, right?
Yes.
Going to the GSA?
Yes.
Okay, so the concern that I have is I'm not sure that they're all, that they all know how the GSA is actually working. Because I was noticing some of Jim's questions and stuff like that. So if you're actually taking this moment to solicit information for them, how to represent the city, they each should be confident in how that GSA is working so that they can say, "Yes, I like this," or "No, this shouldn't be," versus trying to actually iron it out here. Because if you don't understand it, it's pretty hard to send you as the representative to this group and say, "This is what," or the direction the city would like to go. So I, I think that all five should, should at least either make sure that they understand it in their own mind or something. So it's just a recommendation, because it's hard for you to vote on something or make recommendations if you're not sure how it's all going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you feel confident about what's going on and where, where we're trying to go, or at least understanding the process?
I feel a lot more confident now.
I mean, because as I've said, I will not vote on policy without your approval. And as far as those minuscule things that, nothing's minuscule. But the things that don't affect our everyday way of life, like are we going to meet on Tuesday at noon? I, I am going to make those votes. And if that's not your direction to me, please tell me now.
I'm good, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, with the tech and all of the policy committee and all that, that there was voices. Other than that, yeah, I understand how it works. It's very similar to Cooperative Water, and we've said on that for a long time, so I'm good.
I, I just don't want you to feel you have to run to us every time you have to make a decision, that was my point.
I, I think Keith addressed that with me. He said, "You've got to understand that they're giving you the authority to vote. They're not giving you the authority to change the way of life in the Indian Wells Valley." And he said, "Can you make that distinction?" And I said, "I think I can, I think I can." And that's my intent, to represent what you all, representing all of us, do. Everybody, are you okay, Jim?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've expressed my concerns. But I think I'm in the minority on that one. I, I feel like I have a good feel, handle on what, how it's working. A little bit better every time I, I have these discussions or go to one of the meetings. The only thing I don't have a good handle on is what's going to happen, like what, what the future holds with the GSA. And I don't think anybody has a good handle on that. Because that's, that's very, very undefined and, and also very concerning for me.
It is, it is undefined in that respect because until after the public hearing and the GSA is formed, and the GSP is formed, so the GSA can be formed and all that down the line, it comes to, how are we going to work together? How are we going to fund it? What is the parameters of that? And that's where we are going to need good input from all the committees. And that's where the committees, and that's why as many people working on the committee, in my mind, is the best way to do it. You're part of the problem because you exist, you need to be part of the solution. And not, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'm simply saying that we all are part of the problem. Unless you could find a way to get more water here, rain, so anyhow. Okay, so are you all happy with this item? You've given me direction. Do we need to vote on that?
No, there's no vote needed. No vote needed, no.
Okay. All right, then the next item is committee reports. City Org.
Meets next Wednesday.
Um, thank you, I see you have my name on there, thank you. The Infrastructure Committee?
Meets next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Can be a busy week next week.
Parks and Rec.
Never meets.
You are going to meet because you have something.
Who, who said that? Mr. Cox, Mr. Cox, did you say that again? Okay, I thought you said that. Thank you. No, we do meet, so that you are aware that, maybe you're just not here when Jason gives a report as to things that he do cover. But in this case, we are not meeting.
Okay, the End-Hoc Youth?
Oh, that's the first, second Wednesday of the month.
Okay. The Action Committee?
It's quartered.
Okay. RACBB?
First Wednesday of the month.
Okay. I, I, other committees, boards, and commissions.
I have one. So I, I met with the, oh my goodness, my mind just went blank, League of California Cities. We, so the way, for the public's benefit as well, the way this is structured is annually, they have a very, a large general meeting where you have lots of instructional classes and training and things for council members to go to. But not just council members, staff members and city managers and city attorneys. So if you have, if I could just take a couple of minutes and tell you about some of the training that I received, because there was some really good stuff in there. And I love going to those every year, it's, it's just very, very instructional stuff and just really good material. So the first one I went to was talking about disaster preparedness and emergency response type situations. They had the, some of the council members and the chief of police for the San Bernardino, City of San Bernardino there, talking about the, the most recent terrorist attack and just how they responded to that. The lessons that they learned in dealing with that crisis situation and how to, how to respond to the press and how to, things, things to do and not to do. It was, it was very enlightening for me. And, and by the way, I can, I can get any of these briefings for you guys if, if you want. The, the other ones I attended, there was one in particular that really struck me hard. We, we've talked in the past about getting, getting help, you know, we're short-staffed, we don't have enough people to help out. Well, this one in particular was talking about getting the youth involved. And they were talking more in terms of like high school age youth doing internships with city staff and, and more just an educational thing, getting them involved. But I thought, what, how cool would that be if we took that, those lessons learned, and maybe applied that to the college level where they can really actually do a lot, a lot of benefit to help out the staff as well as train people? And so there are three different cities, I don't remember them off the top of my head, but they each had different programs of getting youth involved. And, and it was, it was a really neat program, some really great stuff came out of it. And, you know, I think that's, when, when, when I was going through one of the, one of the debate things, we, I had the question asked me, "What are you going to do to get the youth involved and the younger generation involved?" And I kind of just sat there with a blank look on my face, "Bah, bah, I don't, I don't know," you know? I haven't really thought about that much. But there's, there's a huge untapped resource, I think, in the younger generation. So there's always an issue of cost, right? We always have these great ideas and we want to do stuff. But they had some really great ideas on how to partner with private entities, private businesses to help support a lot of that cost. So if you're interested in any of those briefs, they had some really good material on that as well.
I would like to see that. I think that's, that's one of the things that I have talked about in the past, and I know you have with your committees, because we've talked about, they don't necessarily be, be involved in the, the implementation, but the help of just doing the daily work and filing and understanding those kind of things that give them a job to do and be a part of it. We've talked about that. I know they do it in California City all the time, and they're just very pleased with the way it's, it works.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll send that brief to you, Peggy. The, the other one I went to, I only attended one day of actual classes, just because I, I had to skip a day and stay here for, for work-related things. But the, it was relating to, you know, a lot of the trend that's, that's happening in the nation about kind of this anti-cop mentality, anti-police mentality, and, and what cities can do to help, help smooth things over with the community and help, help relations between, you know, the city, particularly the police and the public. And so they had a lot of really good information in there. One of the things that was brought up that I know other people in the community have talked to us about several times, something that's been on my mind, but I don't really have an answer for it, is the, the use of a, a police commission of some kind. I mean, I, I could go on forever about all the different things they talked about. But, you know, honestly, throughout that whole thing, I, I got the feeling like a lot of other communities are so much worse off than we are. I mean, really, really, and maybe I've got a different perspective than the chief would have, I don't know where he went to. But it seems to me like this community actually really supports the police department. And so maybe we didn't, I didn't need to hear that as much. But the idea of a police commission was something interesting because I've never really, you know, had a firm idea in my mind of what that should be or how it could be. And basically, he's, I asked him about it, and he said, "You know, it could be anything." I mean, every community is just totally different. And so really, it's about finding out what the needs of your community are and, and adapting some sort of program to fit that. But there is no cookie cutter police commission kind of a thing that, that, that you should try. So just something to think about.
You know, I asked, right after I was elected, I, one of the people in the community came to me and talked about a police commission. And I listened to him for a very, very long period of time. And I was trying to figure out, do we have a quasi-police commission here already? Because I went to the chief and I said, "Help me understand how this works." And somebody has an issue and goes to the police department, and if they don't feel it's resolved, they have the ability to come to council. And council is the police commission, for lack of a better term. And I think we've never seen, at least I haven't seen it since I've been here, maybe it's happened in the past. Do you know if it has, Dennis?
You talking about voting for a police commission?
No, having someone come to the council with an issue that wasn't resolved with, with the police department.
I think a time or two, there, there have been people at the podium.
So, so the process has been utilized here in this city?
I've had a few people come to me, more in my first two years than the, the last two here. I just don't think there's been as many incidents. But my first two years, there was about three different incidents where people have brought something to me. Sometimes it was an anonymous letter dropped in my mailbox with pictures or something. A lot of times those things turn out to be not, not quite what they seem, you know, from, from the description. There's always another side to every story. But, but I, I agree with you. We, we are kind of the citizen oversight committee for the whole government.
And I hope they, they recognize that, that that is, that is part of our, but I was concerned because, I think, as I understood it, my concern was anybody could, what this gentleman was asking is anybody could come to the council on behalf of somebody else and bring the, bring it forward. And I said, "You mean you could, if I had a problem, you could come to the council and say, 'I'm speaking for Peggy, and therefore I want to have my arrest record represent, brought up.'" And I'm thinking, "I don't want to violate somebody's privacy." And that's why I said I don't think I want to do that. But I don't know what the rest, I, I think there's opportunities and there's certainly a need to look at issues when they arise. What about you, sir?
Madam Mayor, the subject of a police commission of sorts was brought up a number of police chiefs ago. And I'm not going to name who it was, but if somebody can go back over the history of the police chiefs, you might be able to figure it out. Since then, I think the police department has been pretty well-run, and nobody even thinks about it anymore. But that doesn't say that sometime in the future, it might not be useful. And maybe the chief has got some ideas that maybe one would be useful. So I think we could at least maybe start there. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was just trying to see if that's where you were going with that.
Yeah, no, I, I honestly, I'm, I'm pretty open-minded about that. I don't really have any agenda on that, that item. But that pretty much concludes the, oh, and the, the one thing we talked about, the Zero Lives program or whatever, or Vision Zero. That's what it was, Vision Zero. There, there actually was quite a bit of, of argument about that item. Peggy, your, your issue of having the costs, you know, what are the costs going to be for this program? How is it going to impact every city? And I think a few of the members of the public had issues with the, the sobriety checking and things like that. All those things were brought up in that meeting. And so just so you're aware, those, those aren't, you know, lone wolf concerns, they're, they're prevalent. So there was quite a bit of dissension on that one, but it did pass, so.
Please. Just a reminder that the Public Lands Roundtable meets next Thursday at 6:00 PM at the BLM. And I just have a question for you on what we were just talking about. Are you, when we talk about a police commission, are we talking more, from what I'm gathering from what you've talked about, not necessarily like an oversight, more of an interactive liaison, kind of like an, almost like an ombudsman, somebody that can, you know, communicate with the police and the public and us and such? Is that kind of, or is it more oversight, oversight?
Trying to remember what city this gentleman was from. But, I mean, he basically said it, it, it takes on so many different forms, you know? It could be actual, a commission that, that's used to hire or fire the police chief. It could be a commission that actually looks into internal investigation issues. It could be a commission that's simply there to facilitate communication and things like, so it, it could be, yeah, I mean, you could make it anything, depending on what your community needs are.
Tailor it, okay, that was my question. Because I know, I mean, in the past, I've had people come to me that had an issue, and we go talk about it and we go resolve it, but, yeah.
Okay, any other committee reports?
I have Kern Cog tomorrow night, I'll be going to. And as far as the police commission, we voted on a police oversight commission in 1990, I think it was, and it was voted down by the people. But that was a commission to overlook the police, and that kind of causes some tension in town. So, like I said, it was voted down. Anyway, next meeting, I'll give you a report on Kern Cog.
Okay, just a reminder about the GSA meeting tomorrow at 10:00 o'clock. Okay, city managers' report.
Nothing to report.
Okay, future agenda items. Where do you want to start? Mike? Do you have any?
I don't have anything special, we know we're coming to a life, so.
Okay. Okay.
Less is better. Less is more. I, I agree with that. I, I think the only one we have outstanding is still the, the issue about the, how to put items on the, the policy for putting items on the agenda. But I think staff's working that one, so.
The only other one would be the mission statement, the goals are, you know, something along those lines so that since voting is coming up and new council will be coming in, so they have a place to start or some kind of, something on that.
Okay, I had asked a couple of times for the reconciliation on the budget for 2015-16. How are we coming along on that?
That's right, that's going to the Finance Committee next week.
Next week, okay. And we were going to look at the, the issue of the allegations that the Navy is paying not their fair share on the sewer.
I assume our city attorney hasn't spoke with you yet, yet?
No.
Oh, well, I'll remind him, he told me, I thought he needed to have a conversation with you.
Okay. And you all got minutes from Quad State in your packets, did you happen to look at that? I thought, I was really, really impressed. I know that, that Mike is our representative and Steve Morgan, Steve Morgan is our, is our alternate. Are you here, Steve? I haven't got my glasses on.
Yeah, he's, he's back there in Cognito.
Okay. Okay. I had asked him if he could come talk to us just briefly about this, because I would like us to look at it. I think there's a lot of potential for this. I know that the cost is, our fees are, dues are $1,000 a year. And I'm wondering if we are getting the total representation and input that we need and could get. And Steve, is it okay, can I ask Steve to come up? I mean, that's not, okay, Steve, can you come up, please?
The minutes were in our agenda packet?
It came in an email?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Please, Steve.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I was not able to attend the last Quad State meeting, and that is why the minutes were given to the clerk, and they should have been distributed. And at that point, they would become public record if people would like to see them. As you know, Quad State is a coalition of four state counties, counties within four states that represent environmental issues in regards to things such as the California Desert Protection Act, Wemo, they look at anything to do with NEPA. And what Richcrest gets out of it is firsthand information. There is a lot going on in the realm of even still the West Mojave Plan. And if you had a chance to look at those minutes, you would see that in those minutes, there is a reference to an update to the West Mojave Plan that we can gain additional information on. And the reason why it's important to Richcrest is because when you think of what impacts a county, we're in the county. We're in Kern County, we're impacted. We have Mojave Tortoise just south of us, in an area of land that this city at one point was exceedingly interested in annexing. And then, of course, when you talk about those types of properties, you talk about the mitigation levels, you talk about five-to-one mitigation that they were talking about years ago, and they weren't just talking about out in the county, in the unincorporated county. They were talking inside the borders of the cities. So you can imagine what, and I don't know, you may want to ask Walmart if they had to do mitigation for endangered species, and if they did, what they had to do. Because if they had to do five-to-one, that's a tremendous cost. Five, you know, five acres of mitigation for every one acre. So the minutes, and I had a question for the attorney, because in the minutes, you would note that there was a request for a letter to be put together by the Quad State Attorney. And it was a draft letter to the United States Fish and Wildlife Service on their concerns with a draft policy. And I am in possession of that draft letter, because I get the minutes, and this council member, Mauer, may be in possession of it also. But it is a draft, and it is confidential. So before I sent that to you folks, I wanted to make sure that it remains confidential to the council members. Can I, is that possible? It hasn't been public record yet. Once it's public record, all bets are off, once he submits it. But he hasn't submitted it yet.
Well, if it's a draft, it's not a public document yet, so we can keep it confidential.
Okay. I wanted to make sure. So, you know, you have Jerry Hillier come here at least once a year, usually around budget time. But one of the things I'm going to remind him again, he needs to give us a glossary of the alphabet soup. I really apologize for that, folks. I really, really apologize. He knows better. I'm going to fix that. Because there's no way, if you go through here, there are about 25 different acronyms all that Quad State's dealing with.
I just make up my own definitions, and it's fun, so.
Well, we don't want to do that. So it is of great value for the information alone and the cost. It is $1,000, or it has been. That is one-third of the smallest counties' cost at this point. Some of the exceedingly small counties in Arizona and Utah have a very, very small county budget. They basically have a county of 4,000 people. And they have a very small amount of acreage. It's really based upon acreage. And if you note, Riverside has joined. And I imagine Riverside's cost will be about 45K a year.
I did look that up. That's what it was, 45.
What a guess.
Yeah.
So...
I think it's important that we understand how that mitigation affects our ability to grow right in the city and in the county. And I want to see how, I want us to understand and have good input to that. If we have to mitigate five-to-one, whether it be here or anywhere, how does that impact the ability to grow?
It'd be devastating.
Just ask Jim Gregory, he's had personal experience.
I recall. I have heard that.
So you have the ability to look through these minutes and notes, you have the ability to contact Jerry Hillier yourselves, you are the board, you are an associate member, as you may recall, and the reason for that, because this coalition was put together for counties. John McQuiston had asked me a long time ago if I would be interested, and I went to all the Wemo meetings down south and spent hours and hours and hours with Jim McCray and got, you know, went cross-eyed. You'll notice in here as well, there's a report that was put out by the Center for Biological Diversity, which probably should be looked at, because they just like to complicate things.
Yeah.
It's of great value to, I believe personally, but that's your decision. So if there's any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to. I missed the last, like I said, I missed the last meeting. I'm sorry. The next meeting should be telephonic, and there should be, he should send out how to get into that for Mr. Mauer's sake.
I know that it impacts the city, especially if it's five-to-one, but also we have to look at the, it impacts the races which come, which, you know, the revenue. And if we have more than, I believe it is three tortoises show up during a race, we have to stop everything cold and wait till they're done or moved or whatever, change course and stuff.
Well, don't invite them.
You know, they just seem to like to come out whenever we're racing. I don't know what it is. Maybe it's all the engine revving. But it does have lasting consequences and effects, and because the county is, again, you know, working hard to get a lot of the solar and different things, that is going to impact that, it's going to impact us even more.
And the Wemo comment in the notes, it's the travel management planning for Wemo. Travel management plan.
Right. That was the, the travel management plan was, what did we select, three, I think it was? But we wanted the DRECP to go first, because otherwise we weren't going to get our routes in there, but then the DRECP didn't. And so then it was a question of, are we going to get our routes, are we not? We wrote a letter. And next week, when I go to BLM meeting, then I will have, I hope, a couple of answers on some of that. But it absolutely scares the bejesus out of me, because it's only been, what, 20, 25 years now that, you know, this has been going on with the lawsuit and all that? So the travel management plan was fair, but I don't know how it's going to be impacted because the routes were taken out once...
Yeah. And it's still with the route network, that's still not in concrete, which is critical for us and the off-road that we have out here.
Because it was supposed to be, exactly. And then Kappa, don't forget, we have a Kappa coming up, too.
And one of the statements in here, I'll just, and then I'll shut up. Mr. Corals, who is the Quad State Attorney, okay? And I'm very proud of this statement, but you have, we have to be, or I would ask that you're very watchful of this. Mr. Corals stated or said that a no-net-loss policy would be incredibly expensive. And I, from day one, I said, all of these conglomeration of environmental policies need to have a no-net-loss clause for all cities and all counties. It is ridiculous that they continue to constrain and constrain and constrain and build up their bank accounts by mitigation, but they don't count the losses as cumulative, which is absurd. Every time they make a decision, you lose.
I'd like to see this go to a committee, one of our committees, if there's some issues that we can address, and if you could help us with that, Mr. Morgan, how we can do that effectively and have input, especially before the December meeting.
I'd be honored.
And I know none of us have anything to do between now and December 9th, so.
God love you guys.
I would happily meet with Mr. Morgan and Mr. Mauer or whomever on some of this, and we can kind of maybe tackle the travel plan that we've been trying to finish out as well at the same time, even if we do it as an ad hoc for it. Because I'm not sure what committee to put it in, unless we put it in Quality of Life, Parks and Rec, because, you know, we never meet, but it can't be at noon, just saying.
It'll give you something to talk about.
Exactly.
That'd give you some reason to meet.
Exactly.
Again, we'd meet.
We do. We pass each other, we wave, it's all good. No.
Thank you for your time. Let me know.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. Those are my items. Did you have anything, Mr. Thomas?
Future gen...
Oh, we did that. Oh, I guess we did. We finished it all. Okay. Make a motion then to adjourn?
I'm all in favor of that.
So moved.
Okay. Oh, I missed mayor and council comments.
Oh.
Oh, God.
Adjourn anyways.
Did anybody have any? Did you have any?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the team that's been going out door-to-door, providing information to the citizens about Measure V. Did a good job, and I'm not sure, Ms. Rachel, do we meet again before the election?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
November 2nd. Yes.
Okay. Well, good luck to all those that are running.
I have none.
You're all not going to win, though.
Just be careful out there on the roads. Accidents are up, there's been a lot more, and because I'm out there every day, I'm seeing a lot. So just take extra caution and be careful out there.
I have none.
Okay. Now we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's done. Thank you.[1747.91]